Okay, and then I will go ahead and just read the land acknowledgement. We'd like to acknowledge that we are on a traditional land of rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today. So with that, everybody, I'm sure saw all the many attachments and materials that we got. Is there an approval for the agenda that we're going to work through today? Approval in a second?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Okay, second? My second? Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Cool. And then now approval for the meeting minutes from way back December 12th. Was there any edits or comments? And if not, then we'll look for an approval for those meeting minutes. Any issues, edit suggestions? Okay. If not, does anyone want to move to approve the meeting minutes from November 12?
I move to approve the meeting minutes from November 12.
Thanks, Melissa. Any seconds?
Second.
I think that was David?
Yep.
Cool. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Any opposed? Okay, moving forward with that. Um, meeting dates. Did you want to have a discussion on that, Mark? Or are we just confirming that we're meeting in February?
I'm close. There's not much to discuss, but I wanted to point out, and we can deal with this really quickly at the beginning of the meeting. There is one conflict with the holiday. So all the regular meetings fall perfectly aligned with the calendar, but the November 11th date conflict with Veterans Day.
Veterans Day.
And so the memo lists five, six options. The reason we have to talk now and set it is this link Deputy City Clerk programming it and having the link not changed until next January to avoid what happened tonight. If we can select a November date, then that would facilitate that. If not, then we would just fix it in August, September. But the six options are Monday, November 3rd, Thursday, November 6th, Monday, November 10th, November 12th, 17th, and 18th. The closest one is Monday instead of the Tuesday.
I cannot do Mondays, but...
And I can't do Wednesdays.
Was there, is there any opposition to just keeping it on the 11th? Or, Mark, are you saying that you guys won't be working that day?
Well, we may be working, but City Hall will be closed.
Got it, got it.
Yeah.
I don't know that it matters. I'm usually out of time that weekend, so it's my, I continue. We'll talk about that.
Yeah. And so if we don't, since it's tonight, we could leave it hanging. It just becomes a Zoom link issue, and it may be that at that point in the year, there are no agenda items. It's too soon to know, but we'll be through middle housing. The CPAD will be primarily done with the climate element, and you'll be doing the rest of your work plan. So it's really early, but I thought I'd at least point it out. More forward, the rest of the dates work, and we can plug them in and put them on your calendars.
I'm wondering if mine just want to punt down the road. Unless somebody feels strongly about deciding today. We're also missing, I think, at least two people.
I say we won't give them what's on our agenda.
Agreed.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, um. Public hearings. Did you have something in particular there? Or did you want to see about if there's any, we're not accepting any public comments. It doesn't look like you have any folks in there, do you?
I'm no, yeah, the bold on the agenda is the format for Zoom and doesn't change. So when there's no item after it, that means it's not applicable. So there are no, and we don't take remote public comment, but we do have two parties, one party present in person for item seven, six.
Oh, great. I'm sorry. It's kind of cut off. Are you on the far left side? So I can't see. Sorry about that.
Yeah. So in other words, we have a public comment in person here.
Great. Please.
Okay, yeah, my name is Jen Thorson, and I'm on the board of Lake Forest Park Third Place Commons. And actually, I'm just here to invite all of you to our auction breakfast fundraiser on March 6th. It's gonna be, we have a really, really good auction this year, and we're celebrating our 25th anniversary and the farmer's market's 20th anniversary. So I brought some invites. I'd love to see you. You could buy a, we're hoping the planning commission could buy a table and represent the city.
What time is it at?
Well, it's at 7:00 AM.
Oh, that's right.
That's the, that's the top one. But I will leave the info. And we'd love to see you there.
And that's on a Thursday?
Yeah, Thursday and March 6th. And it goes until about 8:45.
And this is similar to last year, the fundraising and the boostering and the good food and everything.
Yeah, Honey Bear puts on the breakfast, and it's a great auction. I don't know if you're familiar with Ken Carson. He's a radio personality, and he does, he's our auctioneer. He does a great job, and we've gone above and beyond with some of the items we've gotten this year. So it's gonna be a good one. So anyway, we'd like to see you there. And I will
Please do, yeah.
But yeah, let us know.
And if any remain over, we'll put them in the front cabinet.
That would be perfect. Alright, anyway, that's it. So hopefully we'll see you there on March 6th.
Great. Thanks so much for the invite. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Take care. Thanks. Okay, city council liaison. Do I see city council member Levo, is he in there?
Council member Levo is not here in person, and I don't give him as an attendee, so I think we can skip that.
Okay. Well, on to old slash new business. Do you want to pass it over for middle housing?
I do. So we reserve most of the time, two hours tonight, to really kick off middle housing. We talked about it last year as a policy. How bring the plan is adopted December 2nd, so at that policy level, we are now transitioning to development regulations. We discussed it in November. We did not have a December meeting, and then today really is the beginning of the spring effort to come to a recommendation for the city council on these development regulations. So there's a lot of material tonight. And we wanted to reserve the majority of the two hours for the project consultants, SEJ Alliance and Leland Consulting Group. And so they have three representatives here tonight. They're all passed in as panelists. And I think you're familiar with them because of the policy effort last April and and you've met, and so I'll just leave it to them to remind us who they are and get going and get what they need from the commission tonight.
And if you don't mind, real quick, Mark, I do see that we have just a few couple items after this. How much time do you think we need to reserve to hit the last, you know, 10 through 13? Basically 11, 12, and 13? Want to at least save five, 10 minutes at the end?
Yeah, if we're, if we're wrapping up at five minutes to nine, we can cover the rest.
Perfect.
Wrapping up this, five minutes max for the rest.
Awesome. Thank you. Sorry, take it away.
Well, you know, I think I'm gonna introduce myself first because I don't believe any of you have actually met me yet. You've met other folks from my firm with SEJ Alliance. But I'm Kirsten Peterson. I work closely with Zoe Taper, who has been to your previous two meetings. She did a PowerPoint presentation on all of the middle housing guidance. David and Andrew, I think you've met before, and they'll introduce themselves as they feel they need to. But I've been with SEJ Alliance only since May, but I've worked for jurisdictions for 18 years. And I was always closely working with planning commissions and working on code updates. So I've enjoyed the work on this. We are working with four cities on the side of the state to help, help them with their middle housing. So we're getting pretty familiar with it. When we get down to maybe the need for graphics for your code, we've been developing some really nice tools for community members to visualize what's going on. Now, in your packet, and I'm gonna turn some time over to David and Andrew here in a minute, but in your packet, the first thing you're gonna see is a technical memo from SEJ that real quick breakdown, because you have a really large packet in front of you today. But what I'm gonna do is actually turn some time over to David and Andrew to go through a PowerPoint that they've developed, kind of refresh you on some work they did back last year, I think in the spring. Is that right? And then when they're finished, they're gonna kind of throw some questions at you because we need to make some decisions that will lead to some of the code changes. So and then they're gonna turn the time back over to me, and I'm gonna just kind of talk through that gap analysis, which is the spreadsheet that comes after the memo. And then we'll start touching on the code amendments. It's the first draft. I'll talk through what's required language that has to be updated per the state guidelines. And then there's areas that the city could maybe consider other options. And I know in their, their memo, David and Andrew get at the affordability issues and some of the other topics that come up. Now, I'm gonna just tell you that the state, they kept updating their guidance throughout all of last year. When I first started working on it, I was working off a draft model ordinance and guidelines they provided in July. And I think they'd maybe produced them even earlier than that, and then they updated them again in October. And then again in November. And so we're trying to keep up with all those regulations and, well, we will try to point out anything. If you have questions, please ask throughout, but I'm happy to be part of this meeting. And then you may, it'll be probably between me and Zoe, who will be attending your future meetings. She and I are working together with a couple other planners, but we'll be the front-facing folks from SEJ. So it's great to be here, and I appreciate meeting all of you virtually. David and Andrew, I'm not certain who wants to kick off from Leland.
Yeah, I'll kick us off. Thanks, Kirsten, for teeing that up. And good evening, commissioners. Happy New Year. Good to see all of you again. So yeah, as Kirsten indicated, including your packet today is a report that was you all or most of you would have seen last April when we were going through the housing element, and we sort of included this as a supporting document when we were talking about middle housing-related policy for the comp plan. During that meeting, we didn't really have much time to dig into this report or some of the recommendations that came out of it, because we were very focused on the comp plan at that point. So wanted to bring this back to you all, give us a chance to talk through. Well, I'll briefly present on it again, just to refresh all of you, and then some further discussion around some of the recommendations that are shown on the slides. Then we can also pull up the document, our report itself, if there are any specifics that we want to dive into. And yeah, as Kirsten sort of laid out, you know, they've already dove into making some draft code amendments, which is largely based on the guidance from the state and ensuring compliance with, with House Bill 1110. But then there's been some discussion all throughout the comp plan about potentially wanting to go above and beyond, or, you know, how can this be something that's specific to Lake Forest Park's context and feasible for its lot shapes and configurations and within your critical areas constraints, et cetera. And so not to say that, you know, as part of this effort, we're gonna be doing every and all code update, but we want to make sure we're talking about the considerations, what possibilities there might be to to increase, you know, housing diversity. Affordable homeownership is a big focus that came out of the comp plan effort. But we'll also be incognizant of your critical areas, of your, your tree canopy, et cetera. So we want to make sure we, we discuss those items and integrate them as much as we can into this effort. So but I will, with that, I'll jump to our slides and, you know, I want to make sure we leave enough time, plenty of time to get into the, the rest of the packet that Kirsten and her team at SEJ have provided. So you guys can really talk through those, those code updates that they prepared. All right. Is everybody able to see my screen?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, brief agenda, which we can skip this. We've been discussing it for the last five minutes. But yeah, hopping into, into middle housing. So just as a reminder, I think this is probably all review for you. Zoe probably covered this in much more detail during your last session. But, you know, as required by House Bill 1110, we need to have adopted development regulations updates by June, end of June this year. Early on, the initial version of House Bill 1110 had some exemptions around critical areas. So we were looking into and exploring that for you all and sort of how that, how the critical areas within Lake Forest Park may play into that, what exemptions are available. There was this trailer bill, House Bill 2321, that amongst other, other things to clarify and adjust provisions in the original bill, it removed that blanket exception for critical areas. Then saying you can exempt parts of a parcel that are, that are part of a critical area. But the original language said you could exempt the entire lot if there, if a critical area was touching it. So that, just want to point out, that's no longer an option. And so some of our analysis discusses what options there are maybe around exemptions for critical areas, or if it even makes sense or is necessary. And we talked about that a little bit way back when, 10 months ago. But so the majority of our discussion here, I'm gonna want to frame around these sort of six points. And I'm pointing out a discussion guide here. We prepared a discussion guide again for that, that meeting many months ago. I don't know if that would made it into your hands for this, for this meeting. But sort of laying out these points that are related to our key recommendations or sort of considerations that we highlight in our report and the executive summary there. And so I want to go basically through these one by one, and we have a couple other slides to sort of support or give some context to these. And then pause for any discussion or questions, so we can hopefully get some guidance from you and direction to move forward with as we move towards a final code update in this process. So I'll sort of go back and forth between this and some of the other slides. The first one is location and density, right? And so we believe, we may have had, we had a little bit of time last time, last April to talk about this, but right, Lake Forest Park is required to allow two units per lot, but you could, of course, allow more than that, and we looked at some areas where that could make sense. So I want to hand this over to Andrew briefly, because he, he performed this analysis for us. Sort of looking at your different neighborhoods, different lock configurations, and perform some feasibility analysis and sort of through this, this process honed in on some, some high opportunity areas where it might make sense to to expand middle housing options within the city. So Andrew, if you want to pop in?
Yeah, sure. Hi, everybody. Nice to see you again. And remembering as I see the room now that it's a bummer that we couldn't be there in person and eat the pizza, because the pizza was really good. Alright, so this is just a summary of sort of the general methodology we used for this location analysis to look at, you know, potential areas that you might want to allow middle housing, where we sort of tried to figure out some criteria to look at where it makes the most sense. So we split your single-family zones into various areas. And we tried to categorize them based on a few criteria, critical areas, proximity to transit and the town center. Excuse me, and you can see the blobs, the circular blobs there on the bottom showing a half mile from the future BRT stations, and then sort of general configurations of the lot. So we don't need to go into great detail here, but you can see basically, you know, the, the color of the zone based on its density is then sort of divided into further colors to, that I was just using as a tool to understand these divisions. But essentially, you've got, you know, sort of the RS 7.2 divided into a southern area to the west of Bothaway, and then the lake area, which is on the shore. And then there's some pockets of RS 7.2 in the north that sort of have similar characteristics, although they're not adjacent to one another. And then similar, you know, you can see with the other zones, RS 20, there's the, the areas in the west, and there's an area in the east that has a lot more slope. And then, you know, the RS 15 has sort of these areas around, around rivers and streams, around the creeks and such. So we, after we sort of did these divisions, we looked at each section, each area, and chose some example parcels. So you can see on the right end, if you looked at the, the full report, there's a bunch of of pictures and aerials, and just to sort of understand and generalize based on these, these areas, what types of development is there and what types of potential there is for, for middle housing configurations. Go to the next slide. So then we overlaid some other things. And so the dimensional feasibility, as we were just talking about, then we compared these with a bunch of other metrics, including here you see walking distance to retail businesses on the left, which of course is mostly near the town center and, and Bothaway, but also, you know, smaller commercial nodes, a bit of commercial along Ballenger here and there. And then we looked on the right, you can see this map shows areas that have existing non-conforming uses, where the lot coverage is already greater than what's allowed in the code. We looked at some, some other factors such as overall parcel size based on, or compared with the lab parcel size and, and and a few other metrics to sort of overlay on top of those areas and see what we would come up with. And the next slide shows sort of the results in the map and the, the options that flowed from it. So so on the right, you can see we essentially narrowed this down to two large areas. And these are areas that sort of scored high in all those categories in potential for middle housing dimensional feasibility. So there's enough space to put other housing on the lot. There's a little bit less tree coverage in some areas. There is, you know, patterns of existing development that would allow you to put in other units in various configurations. High walkability score, proximity to transit, low amount of critical areas. So, you know, it's probably unsurprisingly, the high opportunity area in green is the area along, you know, sort of Bothaway in the 7.2 zone. That's also pretty near to the future transit as well as to the town center. And then, so that's what we sort of call the high opportunity area. This is an area where you could get the most bang for your buck, is allowing a variety of middle housing types, both as far as what could fit, depending on what density you allow, and then, you know, probably have the least impact environmentally speaking. And then we wanted to come up with or look at a second tier of potential locations. So looking at a sort of, from a slightly different perspective, is the moderate opportunity area up in the left along Ballenger in yellow. So these are areas that, you know, there, we saw a sort of different type of possibility for middle housing because of mostly of the lot configuration. There's a lot of larger lots, especially along creek with the critical areas and buffers don't extend onto large portions of those lots. And, you know, the way that the existing structures are set up does seem to leave some room for sort of more innovative positioning of having that wouldn't necessarily, you know, be sort of whole-scale redevelopment or anything, but just sort of opportunities to fit small amounts of additional housing in that could achieve some of your infill goals, some affordability goals from smaller units, and also still be kept out of the way of buffers and of trees if positioned in a certain way. And this will lead into some other recommendations about about where on a lot you might want to allow housing. So we, we looked at these four options, and we, we discussed these with you last summer or fall at some point.
Spring, last spring.
And, and, you know, we sort of took a, a large spread of options. You know, option one, limiting middle housing to two units per lot. This is the minimum required by the legislation. All the way up to option four, where you would allow, you know, a bunch more units, say up to a fourplex or even more on, on every lot. And in our previous discussion with you, we essentially heard that neither of those extremes were what you were most interested in. So that's why they're crossed out here. But, you know, options two and three sort of represent a middle ground. Looking at these areas, option two essentially is the high opportunity area, RS 7.2 and 15 zones near the future BRT, and then option three expands that to consider potentially allowing more than two units also on the lots up in the moderate opportunity along Ballenger Way.
Yeah, and so I think that we can pause and discuss this if there are questions or thoughts at this point. Andrew did indicate though, you know, of course, if the direction is to move forward with wanting to, to incorporate additional middle housing into these areas, there's, there are other sort of recommendations or considerations that come into play in terms of development standards, typologies, flexibility within, within design that can be more supportive or incentivize different types of housing. So that's sort of another part of the piece of the puzzle that I know we didn't really get a chance to speak about much last year that we'll, we'll be able to get into a bit more tonight. But just this point, any, any questions or thoughts on this slide or this, these options in front of you? Looks like, Melissa?
Yeah, and so I know that this is something I've probably brought up at several meetings. I'm just gonna go ahead and bring it up again. I know, I, I know that like looking at a, a map like this, it seems like it's very easy to say like, you know, oh, well, these areas are very walkable to the town center. And, you know, this makes sense to like increase housing in these areas. And as I look at the map, I'm looking at a bunch of houses where it's like, well, no, actually, it doesn't make sense because A, we don't have sidewalks, and B, there's no parking. And those continue to be concerns, and I understand that the state is saying, well, you can't require people to have parking if they're going to build more on their lot. I completely understand that. But some of these areas, it's just, you, you can say that they're walkable, and I guess distance-wise they are, but they're not really safe to walk. And my personal opinion is you know, I know that not everyone agrees with me. I, I don't, I'm not excited about allowing more than two additional units. More than two units on a lot until those issues get fixed here at Lake Forest Park. This, that's it. Meredith, is that you? You over here now?
Yeah, so here are my thoughts. We, through our representatives, have embraced, embraced these house bills. And I'm not sure why we would want to go above that. We haven't seen a huge appetite in our community for increased density. We don't know what the consequences would be. I think that we should take the, the will of the people through our representatives, incorporate that into our, our city. And if we wanted to do something additional, we can do that at a further time, but I don't see why we would want to rush and unless, unless we have a huge appetite and public desire for increased density, which I don't see. So, you know, I think that the will of the people were these bills. We should follow through with them and
I'm with you, Meredith. I think if I go back, you know, last year when we had talked about this, some of what we had said at that time was, well, maybe we put this on pause until we get some of the results from what we've had with the in-person meetings and with the survey results. And if anyone else can remember better than I, I don't recall that increasing density was high on people's list. It was, as Melissa had shared, it was, hey, let's actually get us safely from point A to point B via a sidewalk, or have a light structure to support it. So all that to say is, is I have similar thinking as to you, Melissa, and you as well, Meredith.
All, all fair points. I was sounding more like leaning towards uncrossing off option one. Yana? Um, Yana? Give her a hand, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I, I mean, I. I see it a little bit differently on a couple of fronts. One is that I, I think we did hear a lot of openness in the survey to. More than just minimum, you know, just like an option one approach. I felt like there was a lot of openness and I certainly heard that from a conversation. I was having with community members. So. I'm, I'm pretty comfortable kind of looking at these options two and three. Maybe they're not perfect. But. I, I mean, I think we can and should consider something beyond the absolute minimum. The other is, and, and this, I, I don't disagree at all with you, Melissa, about the reality of our. You know, walkability and everything else, but you can also look at this as a chicken and egg thing. Like if we. Incentivize this, that also gives us some tools and potentially some revenue. And again, the city council could. Decide to think about, you know. Various types of development fees or just prioritizing areas where we're increasing the allowable density. To really focus on the pedestrian connections in those areas. So. I, I don't see it as like, I don't see it as realistic. We haven't fixed the sidewalk situation here since this has been a city. So to me. Having some increased density and frankly, more voices. And more tax revenue. Gives us some opportunities to address some of that connectivity that I totally agree we desperately need. I mean, I know the city pretty well and I. I'm looking at some of these neighborhoods. It's like. Yeah, when you're looking at a map like this, it looks real nice and easy, but like, if you think about how people. Would get down to those BRT stations when they live on kind of this, you know, the steep hills of Sheridan Heights with no sidewalks and. All that. Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not ideal. Currently, but. I don't, I'm not in the camp of saying, let's do just the minimum until we fix this. Nobody's gonna fix this. Uh, like, just because. We could get momentum to fix some of these things if we welcome some more, you know, density in these areas. So. That's kind of where, where I land. So um, I'm not a big fan of option one. Um. I'm not saying. You know, we shouldn't consider it. I just don't think we need to stop at the minimum.
I don't think I've ever seen an example of where, you know, you let more people, you like have the changes come later. Like I've never seen a good example of that where we say like, oh, let's wait and see and. You know, let's do this and then, you know, maybe, you know, the city will be able to then step up and do sidewalks. I've just never seen an example of that. I don't know why this would be any different.
Yeah, I guess what I think about is, I mean, and I don't actually like this model very much, but what you see. All over frankly, Shoreline, Seattle, other places is when people are allowed to develop certain densities of, of housing. They're required to either put money into a sidewalk fund or they have to build it on the block that they're developing. So. What I don't like about it is, and we see this. A lot in, in parts of Shoreline is you have these sidewalks to nowhere, right? There's a, there's like a condo complex or apartment complex. And there's two blocks of sidewalk that they had to build because when they got the permit to develop. And then it ends, right? It doesn't go anywhere. Um, but what I'm saying is I don't think we're, we are powerless to, you know. Advocate for that needing to be part of the deal with the city. Around, hey, we, we think we could have more, but you guys need to get serious here with budgets, taxing authority, grants. Um. Everything else to actually start addressing those issues because it kind of. You know, even the development may not come if it, they don't see that the city is committed to that. So I, I totally agree with you on the problem. I just don't think that. Saying we're not gonna change anything until that's fixed, then we're definitely not gonna get it fixed. Is what I've observed in communities around the sound. So um. I really appreciate you pointing that out because it's totally true. I just am not sure that's the way I would go. To say, well, until we have sidewalks, hmm. I don't think we'll get it in that way.
I just have a question on that and maybe. Leland, you know, or maybe Mark, you know, I thought one of these bills that said you had to allow for greater density. Put restrictions on jurisdictions with saying, well, in exchange for. Doing more units on this lot, you can't require them to contribute towards like an infrastructure fund or towards putting in sidewalks or things like that. You can't like penalize them. In exchange for that. So you wouldn't be able to charge. Higher fees or anything like that to offset. The infrastructure strain that the added density is gonna involve. Is that correct or was I misunderstanding?
I mean, that to me sounds correct that you can't on a development by development basis, make it sort of contingent. But that doesn't mean that you can't, I mean, i- if this, if the city applies for, you know, competitive grants. To address transportation issues, including pedestrian, bicycle, everything else. Are they gonna compete well if we're only allowing the minimum? That's in this legislative package? No. If we're showing that we're willing to lean into the middle housing issue. We're gonna be much more competitive in getting the funding that we need to actually develop sidewalks, you know. Bicycle infrastructure and all that. Um. That's my observation. I've competed for a lot of state grants in my work. And they like to see that you're really being responsive. To the legislation that is driving some of that funding. And I feel like if we kind of go with a minimum. I don't know where we're gonna get the money because we're not gonna compete with the cities that are willing to. Willing to take in some density and take some risk. We're not the only city like this. I mean, there are so many cities like this that don't have. Adequate infrastructure for non-motorized uh, transport.
I think that um, that there's nothing in the, the laws, I recall, somebody even corrected me if I'm wrong, that um. That says you can't charge, you know, an impact fee or, you know, uh, uh, or, or, or charge. Or, or impose fees on development, you know, that will pay for infrastructure. I think that the only. Difference is that they can be different than or more stringent or higher than you would charge for like a single family home. So. Um, you know, i- i- if, if you're. Yeah, I think you, so you, you're right in the sense that you can't penalize middle housing specifically or ADU specifically. But the, it does, it's not, not to say that you couldn't impose such fees overall in the city. Um.
Long as it's equivalent with the single family residents. Yeah.
I would, I would characterize it in different words than you. But the tool, now that we have the development regulations. The library on uh, the middle housing webpage. Has all the relevant bills and we can review those for any such language. But my summary would have been, you can't treat it any differently than you treat a single family in the past. When we get a short platter, a lot split, they're not subject to street improvements, flat out. So if you have a large lot, you split into two, though, two single family homes. Hope works does not condition them to put in per gut or sidewalk. They're just exempt. So if that's the case, then uh, middle housing would be similar. And we don't have the impact fees or. Or I can't say unfortunately, we don't.
Okay, so what I'm understanding is that we're looking at option two and option three because we've caught, we've. Decided back in spring that we didn't like option one and option four. I like option three for the fact that there is a wider net. Of possible properties for people to build on. Um, that increases our chances of getting to the density that we want. Because we're already struggling to figure out how to get that density. And so if we're only talking about another unit on a private property, let's say. You know, that's, that's only one more house and you know, it could be a, a development. I mean, some of those property. Could possibly turn into, I don't know, a, a multiplex. I, I don't see any. How we can get to a, a multiplex on any of these properties really because. They just don't seem like they're big enough. So. I, I'm leaning towards option three and I, and I get it. There's no sidewalk. There's no bike path and that is a big deal to a lot of the residents here. But we also have a lot of residents here that are elderly and they're not gonna build. They're, they're basically. Happy with what they have. And they're not going to invest in a rental or anything like that, or. Possibly sell off. You know, once they're, they, once they died, then possibly their children. Inheritance, you know, will wanna do something and sell their house. But I, I know quite a few elderly people and you know, they're quite happy with what. They have in their home and they're not interested in building another, um. Home or a, a resident, I guess.
So I'm wondering if we can move on beyond this conversation right now. Uh, to continue with presentation. Given that we had the conversation in the spring that we sort of option two and option three being the best. Or do we need to revisit this conversation within which? I mean, is there enough energy about bringing, bringing option one back into the conversation? Or can we move forward with option two and option, option three being? Our focus?
I, I would like to revisit striking out option one. Um, and it sounds like we maybe had some. Some interest in that from other attendees in the room as well. Option one sounds like it satisfies what the law requires. Uh, so I think we should be considering that. I don't like option three. Um, I don't think, you know, opening up a vast majority of our town to. Increase density well above and beyond what the law requires is necessarily in line with. The values we heard from the community survey, from the town hall and from the discussions that we've had here. I would be open to considering. Maybe an option one point five, that's a lighter version of option two. Maybe with closer walking distance into that bus rapid transit because as we've talked about here many times. Even within a half mile of five twenty-two, there aren't always safe walking paths or, or modes to get to that rapid transit. So. It seems like there's an option maybe between one and two that allows for more than what the state requires. Uh, but then is more in line with where there is perhaps some of the infrastructure for rapid transit and multimodal transportation.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I, that makes sense. And we could look at a quarter mile or whatever criteria makes the most sense, but I. You know, I, I was also thinking, David, that, you know, that some of the other things that we proposed or not even proposed, but just. You know, put fours in the report and are gonna talk about here, um, are not so much related to. Even two additional units, but just some of the other priorities that we, we heard in the, you know, in last year's, um. You know, interactions with you all in terms of affordability and, and homeownership versus rentals and things. So, so, you know, some of these things are, uh. May, would, could still apply even if we really don't allow much more than option or any more than option one, uh, in terms of just other priorities and. Uh, pa- policy priorities that we discussed during the campaign that we could work in these regulations. So I think it is worth continuing that discussion and, and that might inform this, you know.
Well, yeah, why don't, why don't we table this for now? I think, you know, option one. Is more or less what um, what Kirsten and her team have, have been working on and will be sharing with you um. Later this evening. So uh, but related to. Or to what Andrew was saying, some of the other sort of considerations we wanted to discuss with you, um. May also be related just to if you're, if you're allowing two units and we can, we can sort of circle back to this. Um, I think it'll help inform this discussion as well. So. The, the next piece here is typologies and form. So looking at a wider way of, of housing in residential areas. Um, right again, achieving your goals around, around affordability, um, while limiting disruption to natural environment. So what does that mean? We're, we're talking about maybe looking at sort of atypical configurations of middle housing. Um. This is, does not necessarily again, need to be above two units. Um, but because there, you know, there are a lot of critical areas because of the um, the, the tree canopy within your city. Um, there are a lot of lots that do have additional space available within them. That, that the actual, you know, acreage and is, is underutilized, but. Fitting in sort of a, a traditional second home would be quite difficult just given. The placement of, of trees on the, on the area, um, or. The, some of your existing regulations that maybe don't allow for a unit in the front or the side of your house. But that house is way far back on the lot and there's a lot of space up front, for example. Um, so this is looking at. Sort of flexibility in location of entrances is something that's been utilized um, done here in Portland. Um, and other jurisdictions as well to great success. Um. Basically allowing entrances on the side of a building, um. And or allowing uh, sort of walkways or separate entrances that go down the side of a lot. Um, and sort of building this into your, into your code to allow, uh, allow it can, can add additional flexibility when, when looking at potential. Development of additional units. Um, sort of related to that, this is looking at second units or ADUs detached ADUs more specifically. Um, being on the side or in front of an existing building. Um, instead of in the back, which I believe your, your current code restricts, uh, or requires it to be behind the existing dwelling. Another is, I know cottage clusters have been talked about in the past, the, the possibility of, of allowing that, um. Throughout the city, um, or, or maybe incentivizing it at a greater level, maybe above different types. And that's another option I think that's worth considering is that. Um. You know, regardless, if, if you stick with, say, with option one, which is the minimum of, of state requirements, you're still allowed to require. Four of the nine listed middle housing types within House Bill eleven ten. Um, one of those would most likely be cottage clusters. Um, the possibility to promote these or through your code, make it, make it easier or incentivize it through. Through some sort of bonus programs, um, is another option as well. Sort of bleeding into, to other um, recommendations or considerations around this, but cottage clusters, um. Whether connected, um, or sort of closely spaced can be configured in a more flexible manner compared to other. Other um, development types typically if you're talking about four units. Um, you couldn't, sorry, if you're allowing it to be flexibly placed on a, on a lot, it could be done in a way that specifically limits impact to. Um, to tree canopy and, and critical areas. Um. So that's sort of one of the few of the options we wanted to, wanted to discuss. Um. And we have some sort of specific development regulation or recommendations around this in our report as well. Um, and if these are, are the things you think are worth, worth exploring further, we can, we can work with. Uh, Kirsten and her team to, to come up with maybe some draft code language. Um, that, that speaks to sort of typology and form flexibility in your code.
One, the, the things we talked about many months ago, just in passing, I think after we heard. The presentation here from uh, the nonprofit land trust was. You know. Were there models in other jurisdictions that we could explore where? You know, you get an ability to do some greater density or have some more flexibility for middle housing types in certain areas. If there is kind of an affordability mandate, uh, along with it. Um, and we heard the poll up to like, you know, there's kind of a. A deed restriction on kind of resale that kind of preserves affordable housing, which. I think is maybe more in line with where some of the sentiment we've heard from feedback from community members is. In terms of allowing greater density. There's been some feedback that. You know, allowing the starter family home to be torn down and then to, you know, two million dollar homes to be built on the lot isn't really solving the problem of affordable housing, which. We're hoping to address with middle housing. Uh, but are there other models or, or things we could consider in that regard?
Hmm. Well, actually built into the model code, not for a tier three city like, like Forest Park, but, but tiered two and one. Um, are actually requirements to, to provide a sort of. A density bonus that, that has an affordability requirement along with it. Um, as, as a minimum. So tier one cities have to allow up to six units on residential lots if. Two, the two units above four are deed restricted at an affordable level. Um, for tier two, it's um, above up to four units and two above four, um, required to be affordable. And so that's, that would be sort of a simple way to say, well, maybe we wanna go the tier two route. If you wanted to incentivize additional affordability, you could say, well, we'd allow up to. Four units if those additional two units are deed restricted. Um, that's something a lot of jurisdictions have done around the Seattle area along, or, or across the nation. Um. There, there's also, um. One of the other recommendations we have about uh, about form, about um, the way that FAR is regulated. Um, you can this allow an additional sort of FAR bonus limit. The FAR maximum for a single family residence, which effectively limits the ability to replace a one for one home with your, with your McMansion. Um. And would incentivize additional units by, by allowing the envelope of the building. Um and would incentivize additional units by by allowing the envelope of the building to be slightly larger. Um that coupled with um some affordability restrictions or requirements. Um has been a a successful strategy in in other cities as well. So one of.
Uh David, I'm sorry, uh just one question because I it just, it's in the back of my mind and because I'm curious about this group. What size do you consider of a mansion?
Is that a question for?
Okay, I'm just curious and and from you guys as well, but it just, it's just so unclear what I just. I have a reason why I'm asking, because I'm just, I'm just curious.
I don't know if I've ever thought of that.
Yeah, yeah, I, do you have any idea what you consider?
I I I don't, and I mean, it really depends on the family size too, like we've got a family of six, so. It's a lot of people for free bathrooms.
Right, yeah, I mean, we live in the, you know, over two thousand square feet, the house was just not big, big, that's big when we moved in. Until we had family, so I'm just, I I'm just, I. Nothing, it doesn't impact our thinking here, but I'm just curious, because I I I think there's a. Um a difference in opinion in this group that we haven't really explored. And I think questions like that will help us help us identify what it is or. Uh you know, uh. As a group, how are we gonna, how are we gonna uh? Decide how to move forward? If that makes sense. And maybe we don't have such a difference in opinion, but. I just, I just how the conversation went with the with the four options. It suggests to me that we have a a difference in opinion more than I thought we did. Nothing wrong with that. It just has me think that we got, we have to uh process that difference.
I mean, I always pictured a McMansion being a two-story monstrosity that actually takes up the entire lot that it's sitting on. I mean, that's what in my mind. What a McMansion means, like you're just taking up all of the usable space for house.
Yeah, typically, I think maximizing the footprint of a of a lot is.
And that was the thinking behind what the what they did here in Portland, which was to to regulate not based on square footage of the house, but based on FAR. So if it's taking up. All the space, like you said, um then the the cap is placed based on that cri- criteria um. Um more than on this, the straight up square footage.
And in fact, again, and not in a tier three city, but in some of the tier two and tier one. Uh model codes, there's sort of a graduated FAR scale um that that is integrated into. Um into those that model code. Um I don't believe it is actually required. By law, but it's sort of a a recommendation, part of the guidance that that came down from the state. Um so I'll just move through sort of the rest of our slides here. I want to make sure we have time to move on to Kirsten's um points. I don't know that when it's really come to firm conclusions on everything um we're sharing today, but um. Wanted to touch on one of the other discussion points, um which is parking, parking is um. Is obviously, uh it is always a important factor when you're considering housing feasibility. And so, you know, in looking at your existing um parking requirements and looking at what's a way that you can move the needle in. Um and making additional middle housing feasible, and this goes for if it's just a duplex. Or, you know, three, four units, this this applies to to any form of of additional um units in your neighborhoods um. So considering about reducing your parking requirements. Um whether it's for an additional unit or base it more around the number of bedrooms or proximity to transit. Um so not just having a blanket requirement, I believe currently it's one point five. Spit stalls per per unit in a multi multi-family um setting. And so um. I guess the question here is, is there an appetite for exploring that? Or or trying to integrate that into your into your code updates in certain situations um where it could. Support the further development of middle housing.
So David, are you asking that question right now?
Uh well, it's, it's, I think. We're looking for for direction on whether you'd like to see some options, basically, of exploring um different parking standards. As as is sort of in the code updates that um that Kirsten will be presenting later, I don't think we're we're touching that. At least above what's required in the in the the state legislation, so.
So yes.
Again, I personally, I do not support like allowing homes to be built without a parking. Requirement because we have no street parking around here and the areas that we do have street parking, it doesn't, it makes it unsafe for pedestrians. In an area that's already unsafe, and so that's, that's my opinion on that.
But if if I'm correct, the legislation already. Takes away the the parking requirements for uh things that are close to mass transit, am I correct? Uh that being the case, and either way, I'm not interested in uh. Doing anything more parking wise than the the legislation calls for.
Yeah, that that is correct, within proximity to high capacity transit, which technically is not. Not currently in Lake Forest Park, will be in the future, um so that would apply at that point, but.
I didn't say, maybe I'm miss miss uh misremembering, but I think it said uh for planned. So it did also enco- uh encompass things that were planned as well, so I think I'll have to um. Go back to where I'm reading that, but um. Yeah, I I I think that, and you know, the reason, the reason that I am not interested in in increasing. Our or or decreasing our parking requirements is just that our city streets. Uh you know, if you if you drive, you know, drive through, they're they're already crowded and I think that the. We already are going to have an increased density and uh so we don't know what. That will fully look like, and so I'm not uh. I think that we should be, you know, content with what what happened already.
Yeah, I think it comes down to like, and I think you were hitting on this briefly, it comes down to. Kind of what is the sense of the commission on? Do we want to? You know, allow for middle housing in line with what the law requires? Or do we want to encourage and incentivize uh the development of middle housing? Above and beyond what the law requires in the community. And this question gets to that, like we would relax the parking requirements if we felt. We should be trying to encourage more middle housing throughout the city, and it seems like. There is some difference of opinion among this group about whether our goal is to. Encourage middle housing development above and beyond what the law requires or. Do what the spirit of the law requires, do what the law requires and then, you know. Look for uh encourage development in line with perhaps goals of affordability or form and character of. You know, the neighborhood, or do we just want to do what the law requires and not much? And I think that's the difference of opinion, and I'm kind of between those last two. I kind of think we should either do, and of course, do what the law requires. And if we're gonna encourage or incentivize development of middle housing. We ought to do it in a way that's not designed to just. Tear down a single family home and put two, two and a half million dollar homes up a lot. We ought to do it in a way that's designed to encourage or incentivize affordability, but in a meaningful way.
Go ahead.
Well, uh so I would kind of couch it in a different way, because uh the way I see it is that. You know, our state has said we want to increase the um the. The ability to have middle housing and we did that through our representatives through these bills, so that actually is the. Yes, this is what we want to do and the result is these bills, and so I think. Fulfilling these bills is the response of. Our, you know, us cumulatively working through our our representatives and. And making that happen, and so I'm not quite sure why we would want to go beyond that, because that is what. They've worked, you know, they knew what are, you know, what our communities would want and they. Fix these things and so I think we should run with that, but I don't. Yeah, so that's kind of how I look at it.
I guess the point I would add to this is that uh. I'm looking at what will make the community Lake Forest Park a viable community. You know, for or a younger generation as well, like what would have a younger generation want to move into this community? What would have my sons want to stay in this? And that's not just the minimum. Of what the state requires. That's, you know, an economically viable community as well, but so I'm I'm thinking about the economics of this community. Um so I'm not. Disagreeing, right, or with i- i- anything that's been said here, I just want to know what the options are. And and so I want to give Leland the the go ahead to let us know, what are the parking options?
Well, I think there's, sorry.
Go ahead, Ed.
No, no, David, I didn't mean to interrupt, sorry.
No, no, it's, it's okay. I think that you can move forward with that conversation.
Well, I I I was just, I was gonna say that, you know, there there is a spectrum of all these things and and, you know, somewhere in between the the. The bottom and the top, like we looked at with the four options a minute ago, but I think here also, you know, on the parking question um. Uh affordability and feasibility are closely tied to parking, you know, on, you know, and and so as far as. Creating affordability, there there may be some worth in considering it, and but again, it's not necessarily that we're looking at eliminating all parking requirements. The question's more around just like, wh- what is the spectrum of potential? Maybe it's not always one point five. Per unit for all development, maybe there's some situations in which it would be one point two or something, you know, it's it's a. I don't know, it 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 doesn't have to be um uh and all or nothing with the parking, just like it doesn't have to be an all or nothing with options one through four, like we could. Look at like you were suggesting option one point. One, one point five or one B. Um so I think that there's, there's um. There's other, other, yeah, to to your point about affordability and and community uh values, I think that that there's maybe. That's one reason to look at some of these, uh at least what the spectrum might be. Um well, I'll I'm obviously understanding, I mean, parking is really. Important in Lake Forest Park and when when we were there, you know, uh it's obvious as you drive around, as everyone has said, I I mean, I I. It's easy to look at the map and just sort of plop things down, but I mean, it's it's certainly obviously true that um it's it's not the. A city with abundant street parking, you know.
Yeah, so I I think just on that note, you know, parking is always a touchy subject. Um. The the next thing, it's sort of other thing I wanted to touch on is is related and into looking at other development regulations, we're talking about like. Um height or or lot coverage, things that can move the needle if you want to potentially support or. Or incentivize um further production of middle housing. Um because as we, as we have seen time and time again, or sort of across the region. Just allowing the units doesn't necessarily get them built. Um which is why, you know, part of our work here is looking at feasibility, and these are the things, sort of the levers that a city has through their development code. To to pull in trying to encourage um further housing diversity. So parking, basically what we're looking for on on this, as well as some of the other development regulations, is. Do we have your blessing basically to move forward and maybe come up and present a few different options to you um about what this could look like? Um we're not saying, I mean, one option could be eliminating all of your parking requirements for for middle housing. Um another option would be um, you know, reduce it from one point five to one or an additional unit above two, something like that. Um development regulations here, so I just want to sort of touch on as well, and so one of the recommendations we talked about are. Considerations of maybe increasing building heights to forty or forty-five or at the minimum thirty-five that can can allow for a third story. Maybe a triplex um of of housing. Um lot coverage, the the minimum requirements under the under the state laws is a forty percent, nothing. Um below forty percent is allowed within single family residents, we found through our analysis that. Um or sorry, within residential zones, we found through our analysis, if. You were to allow up to fifty percent lot coverage, it would increase the feasibility of of adding additional units um quite considerably. Um so those are the sort of the scales or the options that we wanted to just bring forth to the table um. And Yana, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, thanks, and 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 I uh appreciate kind of moving into some of these other topics here. I just wanted to respond to something that Meredith said that. You know, I I don't, I don't really buy into the fact that. What our legislature agreed to is like the appropriate bar. Uh legislature comes to. Compromises that are often frankly pretty. Blah, they don't really get at um what's really needed, but it's what they have to do to get a statewide agreement. We're a first string suburb of the biggest, wealthiest, most crowded city in the state. I think we should be trying to do more than that. So doing more than the minimum. I don't dismiss at all the real concerns about things like parking. Um which I think that issue is actually concentrated in parts of our city, but it's by no means ubiquitous, so I would. You know, I I do think parking is a really important thing to think about. Probably more in our multifamily zones than in our single family zones. But I just don't buy into the idea that we should just do what the state says, which was a. Compromise that everyone in the legislature was able to get, you know, come around to. I'd like to see us do more than that, so. With that said, I I would love to hear some of these, like on the parking. Thing, I mean, most, when you typically hear about parking issues, you're talking about multifamily and how to incentivize. You know, things like what you're seeing built. On Lake City Way, but on the Seattle side of the border, or you're seeing it in Bothell, you're seeing it in Kenmore, but you're not seeing Lake Forest Park. And parking is a huge deal, so there's a lot of discussion nationwide about how much you should require of those within those multi. Story type settings, and I think I'm not an expert in that, and I would love to get some understanding from our consultant team on that. When we're talking about parking. In the context of adding two units versus one on a what is currently a single family lot, I. I don't see that as a good use of time. I don't see our single, most of our single family neighborhoods, except for maybe right close to. Um Bothell Way as being that stressed by parking. I I don't get, I mean, I've lived in a lot of cities. Not just in the US, but elsewhere too, and. I don't see us as having a real parking problem, except in, we definitely do in certain areas. Um but they're not the R ten thousand, they're not the ninety-sixes, they're not the fifteen thousands. There's some of the zones near Bothell Way.
So. So we keep coming back to this question of. Really, you know. What is our goal here? Okay, um you know, so it seems to me that we have to backtrack a little bit and ask ourselves. You know, what is it that we're trying to, Leland's done the the research that for us, right, and they're they're providing these options. Um and they're asking, from my understanding, should they go forward and offer us more options or or? Explore these options that they are recommending. Um and a question I think that we'll keep asking ourselves as as a committee is. You know, what is the purpose? Is it for to encourage more affordability? Is it to encourage more diversity? Is it to encourage more density? Is it to encourage uh just a bare minimum? Right? Um and and we've, we've heard from our community what our, what we think our community wants. Um. Leland is saying, well, here's the options to address what we think that the community is asking for and what. Me is asking for, what the state is asking for. You know, we're offering more options for flexibility. You know, increased uh increased the side, the the height of of buildings, increase the. Uh you know, where ADUs, where we can access ADUs. Uh where, you know, they should be rather than be in the rear, they should also be on the side or in the front of the of 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 the. Of the resident, of the area. Um so I think as a committee, what is it that we want? Leland to do at this point? Do we want them to concentrate on option one? Only as bare minimum, or do we want to hear the options for all of those options, one through? Three, really, whatever that is. So that we can decide in the end. How, you know, what are, what what are the quotes that were, what's the code changes that we recommend, or what's the, what are the recommendations that were? Yeah, because we keep coming to the question, so that, well. Uh well, some of us agree, yeah, let's say, let's hear the options, and then then we keep coming back to. Uh say, you know, one opinion being given and then another opinion get be given around that single question. uh, say, you know, one opinion being given, and then another opinion get, be given around that simple question. And how do we move forward?
I think that's well said, David. Um, and you know, although I'm in the camp of wanting to do, you know, option one, the, the least amount. Obviously, there's other voices that say otherwise, and I think as a commission, it's, it's our duty to explore a couple other options, whether we go forward with it or not, but to have that, that data present, I think is, is a requirement, and what we're probably, I would recommend that we're charged to do. Do we want Leland to spend their valuable time exploring something like option four? No, I think we've all made that pretty clear, that let's narrow that focus to something a little bit more reasonable. Um, but to just solely focus on option one, although that might be the desire for a few people, there's also still expressed opinions to to explore further in that two and three mode. So I would vote just to again, get as much information as possible, so we can make an educated decision. Collectively.
And we, and we all agree to that? Okay.
And just wanted to say I'm off screen because I have little kids who are not staying in their beds, so I'm kind of chasing. So I don't wanna make anyone dizzy, but I'm with you.
And they're, they're not sitting quietly listening to options for?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Um, well, I think if, if everyone's in agreement, that's um, like the marching orders that we need, we'll work with Kirsten and her team to sort of frame out some of these options for you that, you know, in the end, you can decide to, to further explore that path or, or adopt that or, or not. Um. With that, I, I know we've, you know, we're past eight o'clock, eight fifteen now, so I wanna hand it over to Kirsten, so she can can present what she has for you um all as well, which, you know, is, is really getting deeper into your, your code as it stands and, and some of the, the recommended updates, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you all for the discussion.
This is good information. Um, I'm gonna jump to a portion of your packet itself. And I'm gonna share a screen as well. I did mention that we had a memo that we put together, but we've basically gone through the code and identified sections that we know need to be updated. We made some of them because they're obvious, like the state says you need to change this definition, so we've done that. But we've also just flagged areas where we do need that feedback from the commission, so that we can make the final changes to the code. So when you get to page ten, and I'm gonna share a screen here. Page ten of your packet is the gap analysis itself. Are you all seeing that spreadsheet in blue and white?
Yep.
Okay. So I think it's pretty self explanatory, and I think Zoe probably shared an example one that we had done elsewhere, and maybe she'll talk through it really quickly, I'm not sure, but we've essentially just highlighted sections of the code that we thought, you know, we better check this out. So we've got title seventeen with subdivisions, title eighteen planning and land use regulations. Um, and we've called out each row a different section of code, and if we've kind of graded out, that means, you know what, there's no changes needed. And then we jump into each of the different zoning districts. So as you're deciding these, making these decisions about, do you want more than two units in some of the zones, we will make different changes to those districts than we might to others, such as the, it's like your RS seven point two and RS fifteen, you're, you know, that's your option two that uh, David and Andrew were just talking about. Uh, but one of the things we have done is just flagged it in here, and then corresponding with this document, this spreadsheet, it's, it's supposed to be your cheat sheet. Because honestly, the code that we gave you is really lengthy, and it took up the bulk of your packet. You know, your packet looks like it's two hundred and twelve pages. So one of the things we're gonna do before the next meeting is we're gonna completely remove the text from sections that you don't need to modify at all, that we've looking at more closely and hearing from you, we recognize we don't need to make changes. But we're identifying each of the zoning districts, and each of those zoning districts refers to different permitted uses. And so, you know, we need to add the middle housing type, so add a minimum, this is just an example I landed on, um, in your SGSFR, Southern Gateway, single family residential. We're going to need to remove the term single family from the term, you know, maybe it could say low density residential, and then we'll add to your permitted uses at minimum before required types. Meaning duplexes, stacked flats, cottage housing and courtyard apartments as permitted in that zone. So we will go in and add that language to each of the zoning districts that's primarily residential. If your group wanted to go above and beyond and add any more of the, the others with the, the nine that are classified as middle housing, we can do that. But those are the four that Commerce says you can reasonably be built in a two unit configuration on a lot. So each of these also just has various development standards. So as we decide what we need to do, we will go through and make the changes. When we get to off-street parking in chapter eighteen point five eight, for instance, you know, we were just having that discussion as we were looking through um Leland's um PowerPoint and looking at the various decision points and options. So we simply noted in here that we will add the parking standards, uh, minimum, we need to at least can uh make sure that we're in compliance with the requirements from the state. We just need to make sure that there are no more onerous for the middle housing types than they would be for any other residential development. And we had that mod, that language all throughout, make sure the standards are no different, you know, for landscaping as well. And so then we jumped into the actual code document. And it's extensive, you can see that there's a hundred and twenty-eight pages to that document alone. So I'm not gonna go through all of it. But in track changes, I just point out, for instance, we need to include a new definition for administrative design review. So we found the appropriate location. And there's two different sections for definitions. You have chapter seventeen oh four with general provisions. And then you also have chapter eighteen point oh eight, which is your planning and land use regulation. So there's definitions that have been added there as well. So we've also um added a definition for condominium, and what we've done is we put whether it's required, and we put in here a little bit of language that's pursuant to RCW thirty-six seventy-eight point oh three oh. So we've tried to correspond those comments with what's in the spreadsheet gap analysis. Um, going on, you, we have cottage housing, courtyard apartments, those are two of your required types that must be added. And I did wanna point out that the state has some guidance on cottage housing. Where if you allow more than the required density, say you allowed at least three, you can actually set maximum square footage allowances. For, and I'll go back to something else with ADUs, they're stating that you can't have a, a maximum of um greater than a thousand square feet. So if you're gonna set a maximum for cottage housing, you'd wanna have some differentiation, maybe it's twelve hundred square feet or fifteen hundred square feet. You, you can set that for cottage housing if you allow more than the two units. And so that's where you've got a little bit of local choice in something like that. Um, courtyard apartments. The definition we have to include is attached dwelling units arranged on two or three sides of a yard or court. So that's just straight out of the RCW. Development regulations is another required one. Major transit stop is a required definition. And that's where that goes back to not having to require parking within a half mile of a major transit stop. So that's where that comes from. Then we also have the definition of middle housing, and as you can see in here, it's those buildings that are compatible in scale, form and character with single family houses, and you've heard this all before. But all of them that they consider middle housing, the state are duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, fiveplexes, sixplexes. And you don't have to include any of those plexes above duplex. Uh, but it also has the townhouses, which you are not required to do in tier three, stacked flats, courtyards and cottage housing. Um, then they wanted us to add the definition for single family zone. Um, stacked flat, you know, and this one goes into the fact that it can't be uh, a dwelling unit in a residential building of no more than three stories. However, really, when you're looking at in a tier three city, you only have to allow two units per lot. So it can be a stacked flat with two units, one on top of the other. We also have a definition for tier three, it's optional. Uh, but we do recommend including that, so there's an understanding when you're talking about, well, we're a tier three, tier three city. And we're, you know, required to meet some requirements of the state that just provides some guidance there. And then the definition of townhouse. Uh, it could potentially be changed depending on the applicability. And then unit density is another definition that the state provides is optional, but we've put that in there, um, would probably recommend including that because there's so much discussion on unit density, you know, the city's required to allow at least two units per lot. And then there's separate from middle housing. But very related, and we want to include it in this subdivision, or this ordinance is unit density standards related to zero lot lines. So we'll have, we'll have that information plugged into the ordinance for the next meeting. It's still being refined right now. Just making sure that we're staying up to speed with what the, the state wants. So now we jump into chapter seventeen point oh eight. And we, there's a lot of scrolling going on here, so I apologize for that. And to get down here to I believe we jump into definitions. Very quickly again. Okay, well, really quickly to let you know, under um short subdivisions and, and um that we, we do have the exemptions that are, that we talked about previously, where if certain types of lots are created, um, you, you can't, you can't require the middle housing, so this is, we, we need to review these, so we need to make sure that we're not going against the state model ordinance here. So we're calling out areas that we need to um do a little bit further review. And I'm so sorry to be scrolling through it this way. So we get to the comprehensive plan and amendments. We will remove this the next time because we determined no changes need to be needed, so we don't need to include that in an ordinance. And then when you get to, I think, I think what we're coming up on next is the definitions for general provisions. Well, let's see, here we are. Definitions in chapter eighteen point oh eight. So this just calls out the various definitions, basically your table contents. Uh, what we're gonna be adding, and then you actually jump into the definition. So you're actually doing some duplicative work. Because you have definitions in more than one place, we just wanna make sure that they match up. I haven't actually talked to Mark about this, you know, I don't know if at any point in time you guys want to try to combine definitions into one location. But there's a whole bunch of them here.
When we, when we have a discussion about a unified development code and a complete uh rewrite.
There you go. Okay, that makes sense. That would be a lot of work for this uh particular task right now. So scrolling through, you're just seeing the same definitions being added to the second area for definitions. Then you have your zoning map, and then we have pointed out, I showed you in the gap analysis itself, that some of the titles and names of your different zoning districts may wanna be revisited with, with they have the term single family included. So when we get to those sections themselves, going back up to here, if we change any of the acronyms for them, you know, we'll just need to make sure that those are modified as well. And then continuing on, this is when you just start jumping into each of the different zoning districts. I'm not gonna scroll through all of them necessarily, well, except I'd have to to get to say parking. But this is where under RS twenty, you know, we'd recommend just striking that term and just calling it residential low. And then we would wanna put in here, you know, the following are permitted uses in the RS twenty zone, and that's what I was getting at previously. We do need to definitely add at a minimum your duplexes, stacked flats, cottage housing and courtyard apartments. If you wanna go above and beyond that to add any of the other plexes, you know, say a triplex or fourplex, we'll just need to know what you want that to be. Um, accessory buildings and structures and accessory dwelling units, those are touched on later. Um, there's definitely some new requirements regarding ADUs that we'll, just wanna make sure if there's any language referring to those. Um, they're met, and honestly, just a referral to these other sections is probably fine, just leave it like that, as long as we update your provisions to, to meet the model or the middle housing requirements. Then you get your um lot coverage requirements, so we need to make sure that those are up to date. So.
Yeah, I can interject a thought reminder from last year. This is the point where we did a parking lot item of do we wanna consider consolidation of some of these types? If the FAR lot coverage and so forth is the same, why do we have five?
Exactly, and we could easily do that where we say, refer to this section of code for, you know, these five different zoning districts, just go here. Because it's a lot of duplication as you scroll throughout. And so you, you have that going on, and then same things here where it's RS fifteen. Right? Lot area, street frontage, lot coverage yards. And then I am going to bear with me, try to scroll quickly.
Can I, can I interrupt for just a second? I'm sorry, I had my hand up, but I know you're looking at the screen, so.
Sorry, yes, I.
No, it's, no, it's, it's, it's totally fine. I just wanna flag something for the commission and for, uh, for Mark. On these last three sections, uh, eighteen, let's see, what sixteen, eighteen, eighteen sixteen, eighteen eighteen, eighteen twenty. So these are the the RS twenty, RS fifteen and RS ten. We have the, every one of those three zones has this thing about street frontage. I've brought this up before. I'm going to argue for striking that section of code from each of those three sections. It is a totally artificial um piece of code that was put in in nineteen ninety-nine to further lock up our biggest possible lots from being subdivided. It's the, you need to have seventy-five feet of street frontage to create a lot. What that, the effect that has in practice, and I can use an example of my neighbor who has a giant lot, sixty-five thousand square feet in an RS fifteen, so you do the math, you should be able to do at least four lots there. That provision means he could only do two. And it's some weird fixation with, we don't want flag lots, so we're gonna make it that you have to have a big frontage access to the street for every lot. So I think this is related to middle housing, it's related to density, it's related to having basically kind of non-transparent kind of code that further amplifies the city's at least former and maybe current desire to have giant lots mostly and to lock it up that way. So I just don't wanna lose that topic, cause I am going to advocate for the commission to recommend that we pull that piece of code from those three sections. Again, these are just the biggest lot, biggest zones in our city, so that we don't have kind of fake development regs that make those zones even bigger than twenty thousand minimum, fifteen thousand minimum, ten thousand minimum. That's all I need to say tonight. I, Mark, I, I'm kind of asking you to track that because I don't wanna lose it, but our, I don't need our consultants to spend time on it, and we, I'd like to give them the floor back.
Yeah, um, one follow up before further interrupting Kirsten, if we do that, there are implications elsewhere in the code for how to treat setbacks on flag locks. How, what minimum uh width of a flag lot and ease that, what purpose? How far of a bedroom window can be from a flag lot, things like that. So they may necessitate further amendments and follow up, but um it's tracked.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. Um, that could potentially be a lot of work to include in this, but I'll just note that other jurisdictions are taking this opportunity to do some other cleanup to the code, obviously, that they've identified over the years, and so the state is not gonna have any problems with you potentially making other modifications to the code to make it more usable for the um public. I think they're trying to push that right now anyway, especially with House Bill fifty-two ninety. For SB fifty-two ninety. So I've moved on past all of those zoning districts. And I've come to the development standards. So once again, we've just flagged, like, you know, when you get to walls and fences, we just wanna make sure that nothing is more restrictive or different for middle housing than it is for any other residential. Um, and that's all, like I said, it's all in that gap analysis, which is pretty hefty. Now, we haven't made the modifications to the ADUs yet, but we will be before the next meeting. One of the things I'm gonna point out here is that you can no longer have E, where either the primary residence or the accessory dwelling unit must be owner occupied, you have to strike that, that's not allowable to do that anymore. Um, and then the garage space thing is interesting, where you can the state is saying you can convert garage space into an ADU, but we just wanna make sure we're meeting all the other requirements. They're also noting that if you're taking away garages. But we just want to make sure we're meeting all the other requirements. They're also noting that if you're taking away garage parking space. You have to provide that same parking space requirement somewhere on the lot. To be allowed to do that. So we'll have language that specifies that as well. Um. And this gets a little bit into the parking requirements here, so we definitely need to make sure we are on, in agreement on what the parking requirements are going to be. Just for clarity, I know that David and Andrew were throwing out some suggestions about. You could potentially reduce the parking requirements. But just the state um, mandates for middle housing are that, if it's a lot that is six thousand square or less than six thousand square feet. You can't require more than one parking space. If it's six thousand square feet or more, you can't require more than two. Now, every community is approaching this a little bit differently, you know, on both directions. Um, I have one community. Um, that they are majority lots less than six thousand square feet. And they're disheartened by saying that they can't require more than one because they like to have two. Parking spaces. They tend to be like two-story townhouse style houses with the parking underneath. And they don't, they said they don't have room on their street, so they want to be able to have the two. And we have the same kinds of conversations where, well. Just because you're only requiring one, you might still get people building it with two. But that usually comes down to whether. How somebody is invested in the community or, or not, and what the market conditions are and what will and will not be sold. So every community has to kind of analyze that for themselves. Um, so that's where we. Had with the ADUs, and like I said, we'll have more information for you at the next meeting. Yeah, there's just too many areas I've just scrolled past, I apologize. Signage, I don't believe we found anything that we needed to change in here. And I must say, you guys have really extensive code, it's quite lengthy, and I understand Mark's desire to try to. Um, create a unified development code. We don't have any changes for conditional use permits, so that will be removed. Off-street parking, so this is the section where we're going to need to make some of those decisions. Um, right here, you've got your parking spaces required. It looks like right now it's two parking spaces for single-family dwellings. And then you have a reference to multifamily dwellings, one and a half parking spaces for dwelling in it. We will need to make some decisions, we'll have to add the typologies of the, the middle housing units in this. And then, you know, put the required minimums. Or maximums here, but if you want to go with less, that's where you have some discretion.
Kirsten, that, I think that's a space where the multifamily parking that. We could really use a little bit of a tutorial on kind of what. Communities are doing. I know it's a hot topic and I don't, I am not an expert in multifamily parking. But there's articles about it almost every day if you read thing, you know, Sightline or even regular news about how. Some cities are moving entirely away from requiring specific amounts of parking. Because they know that developers will still have parking. But, so I'd like to have the commission hear a little more from those of you who are more experts in that than we are. Before we just. Kind of make up numbers. And I'm specifically thinking about the multifamily, so. Thanks.
Yeah, I think that's information we can have for you at the next meeting. I'll, I'll visit with Andrew and David on that. And I wouldn't say that um. I wouldn't call myself an expert, I'm going to rely on Andrew and David to help with the research and knowledge that they have, but. I'm aware of how other communities are approaching it. I've not personally conducted the studies on this, but. I've seen that in communities where, yeah, the, I, I was working for a city, um. And we had really lowered the parking requirements and they. Only required one per unit in the multifamily. And what the developer discovered was it wasn't really working out in that community very well. And, no, it was point seven, it was point seven per unit. So the next time around, they made sure that they had not only one per unit, but they had a few extra. Because their tenants were complaining, and they, fortunately, they were folks that were in the community. Had a vested interest in it and wanted to make sure that their tenants were happy. So they went above and beyond the code requirements, and I think they went up to like one point two instead of point seven. So it's different if you're in Seattle versus um, let's say. Um, Ellensburg or somewhere on the east side. And you've got a little more space, you know, the cost of a parking space in Seattle. Is extreme, and that does impact the affordability of the units themselves. So yes, there's a push to um, encourage less parking in certain areas of the state, and then you move to. And I'll just say, I worked primarily in central and eastern Washington before um, moving on to SCJ. And they liked their big vehicles and wanted enough space for all of them. So it's just um, something that you look at locally, but. When you're able to, hiring somebody to do a parking study is always awesome, but that's not really part of the budget to, to do that. But I think some thoughtful discussion can go into that, where, you know, we could just say, hey, you know, we're going to stick with the minimums. But I think Andrew and David have put a little bit more work into that, and I don't know if either of you want to come on and speak to that or not, but. We can try to be prepared with some suggestions for the next meeting.
Yeah, I think we had some, there was some discussion of it in, in the work we did before, and I mean, I. We've also seen, you know, plenty of situations, like you said, where developers are just building more parking than, than the minimum because they, they know that the market is going to um. Demand it and that, you know, it's not negatively impacting their feasibility. I think. You know, in the case of middle housing, it's like Yana pointed out, it's not very many parking spaces compared to multifamily. There may be a, a desire to look at it for your multifamily as well. Um, and that sort of has bigger implications as far as subsurface parking and things of that nature, which can be extraordinarily expensive. Um, but, you know, I think. Thinking about some of the larger lots, as we've been having this discussion, I've been listening to you guys talk about this too, I've been thinking a little bit about some of these. You know, some of the, actually the larger lots, maybe not the ones that were in our initial priority area or whatever. Um, but there, you know, there, there's, there are definitely a lot of lots in Lake Forest Park that, that are big enough for. For two units and some parking, um, and, you know, because it's not going to be like four, four parking spaces per unit or something, so. Uh, anyway, I think we can, yeah, we can put some more organized thoughts together for the next meeting.
Yeah, that's a definitely an important topic. Um, landscaping cap pathways amenities, I touched on this when I was showing you the gap analysis itself. But we just need to make sure that we're not requiring anything more restrictive. For middle housing than we do for everything else. But I think that Mark's suggestion of just creating one location in the code for all of the standards that are currently match up is. A brilliant idea, and I do recall us having that conversation before, so we can start working on that. Same comments here, so I um. This is a really large document, and I'm going to stop sharing screen here for a minute and show you something different here coming up, but. As we start putting the code into place, um. We have done some work for a couple of other communities where they vary in size. And they've asked us to put to- together. You know, basically their lot standards. So I'm going to share with you a couple of different communities so that once we come down to an agreement. Uh, if we want to update any of. The um, graphics, we can do that. No, I'm just going to leave this, I'm not going to turn it on to slideshow, there's not a whole lot here. But this is for like a forty-five hundred square foot lot. And it's got your twenty, in this community, they have a twenty-foot front setback, five feet on the sides, twenty-five foot in the alley. And then we've put together some different slides where, okay, could you fit an ADU on it or not? And so the orange is the ADU and blue is this, the primary dwelling. This is an example of a duplex that you could fit, you know, we're like maxing out the lot coverage requirements with this one. And so in the two different colors is a potential duplex you could fit on a lot. A stacked flat is where you've got one on top of the other. And then this is where you get into interesting, where a cottage house, cottage home, if you only have two units per lot. What they have to have in common is like a shared open space. And then typically they'll have a shared parking area, so how do you do that with two lots? You know, it can feel strange. Um, at times, and then the courtyard apartment is a little bit different because. You know, there's only, if there's only two that you're requiring, it's, it's almost a duplex, but they've got this courtyard style apartment. And then I'm going to quickly show you another community that we did a little bit of work on. This one will be a little more obvious. Because, oops.
Sorry, you asked, we'd like for you to do that for us?
I'm letting you know that we can go ahead and put that into your code as you make some decisions if you want that to be done. To help, if you want to help people kind of understand what they can do when they're looking at your code. And so.
Or something similar to this, that, that we would be interested in this, so, yeah.
Sorry, let me.
What, what'd you say, David?
I think we, uh, we have discussed this in the past, that we are interested in this sort of visual. That uh, corresponds with the code.
Okay, thanks.
So. This is one where what we did. It's for my Medina, obviously, heads up here at the top, um, they've got. You know, a lot of different lot sizes as well, so for eighty-five hundred square foot, sixteen thousand and twenty-five thousand square foot, we. We just showed what you can do, you know, how it could fit, they want to make sure that the parking spaces were depicted on here. That their landscaping was meant because they also have a high concern over the trees and not losing them. Um, this one is for stacked flats. But then when you get to the cottage homes. You know, there's more than one way to do it if you have a, a larger lot than if it's a small lot over here on this side. And then the. Courtyard apartments, you know, the larger the lot, the more you, opportunity you had to make it kind of look like a courtyard apartment. So this was just to depict to folks like what you could fit with their current lot development standards, and we can do the same based on. The lot development standards for. Um. This community. And um, as you're making decisions, you know, if it was determined, hey, well, we want to see what it looks like if we did three cottage homes. And you had come up with a, a maximum lot size that you wanted to allow, that it can't be more than fifteen hundred square foot. If it's going to be called a cottage house, cottage home. So with that, I wanted to leave a little time for discussion, you know, I, I think I oriented you to how to read the code. What we've done so far is just making sure all of the absolute requirements are in there, but we do need a few decisions made. We're definitely going to go in there and add the four middle housing types that are required. And then it's kind of up for discussion and what you've heard from your community and conversations you've had in the past, I wasn't part of, but. Do you want to add anything else above and beyond that? You know, your triplex, for instance. And then have some decisions made at the next meeting, hopefully around parking and some other things. We will make some updates to the code as I talked about and give you a s- uh, more condensed packet next time. And give you a little more time to look through that as well, so. Based on everything I've brought up and uh, David and Andrew brought up, what questions do you have or recommendations? Or I, topics do you want to discuss right now?
So, so my question for you to help guide our. Thinking process around all of this, will you have guiding questions for us to think about? Like what are the, you look, you, you've provided us with a gap analysis, right? And now, what is it that you want from us specifically for, in, in each of those areas?
Well, Andrew and Dave, you, Andrew and David gave you, um, and I don't know if it made it your way. But there was a discussion guide that was provided to Mark, and what we could do is have that get sent out to you guys. Um, and then since you likely don't have that already, we can send you a few more questions, but really, it's what. Has been discussed tonight, we want you to be thinking about those topics. Regarding allowable uses and the parking. And the areas that are, you know, what areas do you want to maybe go above and beyond just the normal middle housing? Maybe it's only certain zoning districts, as they pointed out, where maybe you allow. More than just those two units per lot, or you might allow some of the other types.
And that discussion and the Leland slides are in your inbox. As you always ask a question, are we going to get the slides? So that the document she mentioned is in addition to the back end. The seventy pages, the feasibility status from last April, but the. Document that she mentioned is an email.
How long is your discussion guide? Is it, was that the five pager? Let me see.
I thought you could bring it up because there are a lot of emails floated around today, last Friday. And we're updating the middle housing sub-page that is the library.
Oh, sorry, Mark.
Looks like we have.
Was that, yeah, it is that, that five-page document, um. It's more or less what we touched on today in our presentation, um. And this was, was actually provided also last year, but we never, we didn't have the time to get through those discussion points, so. Um, it'd be refreshing, basically, on what we talked about, framing out some of the, the discussion questions we had with a little more context. So it sounds like going forward. Providing something similar in our, in our subsequent meetings. It's a good thing to shoot for.
And I'll add that library page form.
And I see a hand up, a virtual hand.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so there's, there's one topic that I definitely want the commission to come back to that we've touched on before. And this is one where it would be useful to hear from the consultants, maybe with some examples. Um. I, some of us heard quite a bit of interest from the community. On things like, you know, whether the label of, you know, cottage housing is perfect or not is beside the point. But about incentivizing, you know, smaller scale. You know, but detached homes. And one way to do that is in incentives through density, right, so. Would we consider, you know, apart from all the discussions we had today about option two, option three, which are a little more blanket. Like how many units do we want to allow in these various zones? But specifically trying to incentivize a, a certain scale of housing that we definitely don't have. And really addresses some needs of affordability of seniors who want to stay in their home community, but don't want a big house. And possibly younger home buyers. So I'd love to see some examples of density bonuses, so let's say we agree that, okay. We're only going to allow two units in our, in our kind of lower density zones. That are not near transit, we're just going to say two, we're just going to do the minimum what the state says, but. Would we consider? A bonus to say, but if you're building, say, you know, units that are, and I don't know what the magic number is. They're smaller than eleven hundred square feet. Da-da-da, and would we allow, say, you know, basically double density? I would love to talk about that. I heard a lot about that when I was convening conversations with neighbors and friends. And it just, it, it's a, something that's almost completely missing from our community. Except for some, you know, old, really old, single-family homes that were built to that size, and they're probably. You know, going to get torn down the next time they get sold, right? So I'd love to talk about that and possibly applying to almost any zone. Or maybe it would need to be in certain zones, but that to me is not as much about, or it's not only about transit or. Accessibility to services, but it's also about just. Creating a new. Piece of our housing market that could, again, help seniors stay. In, in our community, help young home buyers get in. And just, you know, there are a lot of people talking about wanting to live smaller. Um, than, within what the housing stock has, so I would love to just see that in our discussions. And I would love some help from the consultants on maybe some examples from communities that have done that. And I see somebody else's hand on the virtual screen, so I'll just be quiet. And uh, lower my hand.
Say you, Meredith.
Oh, yes, so um, I, I agree with you, Yana, and in the. Public comments, I do think that the cottage housing where people could live. With friends or with family members, I do think that that was one that was. Pointed out as something that people would like, and um. To circle back to something that we have talked about before, and I think would be an important aspect of this, is some education from some builders. Because if they could, if, you know, if we could get some input from them to say, okay, well, for us. It is just as, um, you know, they can get their rate of return the same for like, let's just say duplex or whatever. If we can build these cottage houses this way. I think that that would be really helpful information, and then we could, you know, say, okay, well, you know what? We really do want to encourage this kind of building, and so we are going to say three's okay or four's okay because. That is the tipping point for them, and that can actually make it happen.
I would just echo that. I think maybe the three of us have talked about this separately or some other subset of the group, but. I mean, for the, the good of the order, I mean, I personally built a couple of houses in Lake Forest Park and we have rentals and stuff. And when you do the math against. You know, building a smaller cottage-sized house, it absolutely one hundred percent does not pencil out. And so unless I was to be. Incentivized, me and my family, like there's, there's no way we were going to build it. So I would be eager to hear about potential incentives and. It would be great if we could get, you know, somebody with a building lens to kind of weigh in on that too. That's like, would you do this or would you not do that? Because it does, it has to be fruitful or it's, no one's going to do it. We can have all the permissions in the world, but if the dollars and cents don't line up, it will not occur. So I don't know, I, I know we had talked about this in the midst of. You know, trying to get done our, our big task last year. So I don't know, Mark, is, is this an appropriate time where we can come back and kind of dissect this a bit? Because I think this has attention of a lot of commissioners here and would love to dig in deeper if we. Can.
Um, like everything, yes and no. So the conversation about meeting minimum mandates and going above it, the answer is yes. To examine the full toolbox of what's available for incentives and density bonuses and all that, whole spectrum, the answer is no, that's a separate effort. So I guess the, the paring down quickly is what applies to that initial middle housing conversation. And then having a parking lot for other options that we can investigate as a code amendment.
I guess the last thing I would just throw out is when we reconvene next month, in addition to the request to kind of see, you know, what those incentives could be. Also what could be kind of, you know, the teeth to make sure that in exchange for those incentives, the. Additional density is going to be affordable for a period of time. So that it can serve those policy goals. So if that's drawing from, you know, the tier one and the tier two. Language or otherwise, just seeing what that would look like as well.
Yanni.
Yeah, this is mainly for, from, for Mark and, and please don't take this as, as, as criticism. But when we get, you know, we got a pretty beefy packet and, you know, a weekend is just not enough for me at least to be able to absorb it. So, you know, this is really important work. I would love it if we were to get, you know. The, especially the substantive materials, like from the consultants and so forth, a week in advance. Like for me, sometimes I would rather do this stuff during the week than the weekend, you know, weekends have a lot of. Family commitments, sometimes travel, sometimes fun. Whatever it is and getting, you know, getting this stuff on a Friday for a meeting Tuesday is, is kind of rough, so. And I've served on another planning commission and we had kind of a one-week lead time and so, you know. Maybe that's what I, you know, I, I, I prefer that. I like to read something for the first time and then kind of absorb it and then look at it again and then. Come in with some actual thoughts. And I feel like I come into some of these meetings having just scanned what was provided, so. I know that's not always possible. I've been a consultant, by the way, and, and I've, you know, all that, so, but. If we could strive for more time. With materials. I think that would be really useful. I think it could also help us. Cut through maybe some of the discussion that we have that is maybe just, we're all kind of reacting to what we've seen and maybe not had as much time with it as we'd like, so. Just a request, Mark, not a, not a complaint. Really don't mean it as that, just, just a request if we can do it.
Well, I know Mark wanted it sooner, so I'll take the hit on that. We've been working. Hard to try to get this ready for you, but we want to get it to you sooner with the changes that I discussed tonight. So that's why I kind of looked at tonight as kind of an introduction to it. Didn't really expect you to have everything figured out for tonight, but we will give you more time next go around because it's lengthy. But I, like I said, I will also condense the code document itself, so you don't have to scroll through as much.
And I appreciate it. And we really view as February as a critical meeting. Today could be more of an introduction and range of conversation, but as we get into February and March, the, the overall timeline. Becomes for the contract, for the grant, for the commerce review, the C-BUS starts to become critical. So today is a lot. And it's certainly not early. But February, March become. We need to do exactly what you said.
Um, speaking of time. Or, or just about there. Did you want to hit on February agenda and, and elections and? I guess I'll take a step back. It would be good to know if, are we going to have a lot of, is everyone going to be there? Are there any issues? With that date for anyone? Okay, I have a full house.
Yeah, I believe nobody has notified me they're traveling.
Cool.
But I think we have everyone.
Great. Do you want to talk about elections?
Yes. And so for the consultants, we're done with a, we're not going to be. Appreciate it. Thank you. Now we're going to close out ten, nine, ten, eleven, twelve on the agenda. So if you don't understand what we're saying, it's because we're moving on.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks all. So for those items, I'll condense them. It is a new year. We're going to skip B. We know the parking lot. It pertains to the work plan. We know the first part of the year by heart, it's middle housing. We need a work plan and then we need an annual report to the city council. February, there's two meetings. That's usually the option. Tree board is coming at that time. We've had a lot of discussion about what could be on the work plan. Now comes the time through the chair. To produce those two items and then schedule it for council so they're aware. Early in the year. But middle housing, we know, that's, that's the primary. Second, we're always supposed to offer up election, reelection of chair, vice chair, consider it, and then step back when you do. That discussion. Third thing is recruitment. We have one vacant spot right now. We know that there will be other changes during the year. Relocation and so forth. Spoke to a candidate today, had a discussion and that recruitment's ongoing. I just mentioned it just that briefly. That's, and that's all I have. Next meeting is February eleventh. It's middle housing. And there was some inspiring. I would say right now in January, the two-plus category of commissioners, do not worry about it. We researched it. As you get later in the year, there will be others that are at two to go to two plus and we'll say ahead of it. Middle housing is such a priority. Don't worry about it in January. Okay. We're consistent with code. Okay. But we, we would like at least one new member and very soon too, because. The farmers are moving to. I forget, Arizona or?
No, the place where it's burning. Pasadena.
Oh, my gosh.
I don't know. I don't know if we're going to find a house. I don't, I, I don't know. We'll see. My husband's leaving in two weeks and then we're following him out there in July is the plan, but I don't know. We'll see.
Wow.
Which is sad, by the way, what's happening in California.
It's incredible. I just can't believe it. Yeah, so I, you know, definitely probably will not be buying a house right away. But we'll just even have to see what the rental inventory is going to be because so much has burned down. Anyways.
And then last two items through the chair, one, very briefly, five seconds. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Cockland was adopted to suffer twelve. We're publishing it. We're trying to stay fully digital electronic, so we don't have a lot of paper. You need a copy. It's an honor to get you a paper copy if you're, if you're of that mindset. Last thing, the council liaison is here and we skipped that item early in the meeting. Get you would like to. Take a little time.
I was just a couple of things to express thanks for counseling all of what you did. The work you did actually made a very simple voice to walk through and, you know, really just make some minor edits to the conference. I hope you'll be pleased when you read it to say, you know, it reads as though we presented it to the council and the council just picks. The other is that we did pass the biennial budget and it does include funding in there for a climate coordinator. Funding will need to approve, so the thinking is that there should accrue enough money within the second year. There were some. P increases or utility taxes increases to cover. Half of the shortfall in the year. The other reserves. Reserves is a funny thing. We do have. Money set aside for general fund, certain other funds. To have a minimum amount. We have in some cases above the minimum, so we tend to make up the shortfall in the general. Good for the next meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, you mentioned about some of the other cities that were struggling with significant cuts that are occurring to your sound.
That's fantastic. So will you be hiring soon or wait until next year to have enough funding for that?
Uh, the climate coordinator, I believe it's.
Budget provision, November, December of this year, decision and then hiring process.
So will be next year.
How would it be next year?
My daughter is doing that at Western.
That's it, Chair.
Okay, great. Thank you, guys. Let's, is there a motion to conclude tonight's meeting?
I moved.
Second.
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 All in favor? Okay, adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you February. Take care, everyone.
Right off the bat, for the start of the new year. I can imagine. I hope the traffic, word plus traffic wasn't too bad.